Let's stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no public in here today for public discussion.
I do have a couple of things that I have to text here. Brian, you want to maybe bring it up? Says, questions to bring up in public discussions or anything the county can do that supports local fire department regularly, which we're thankful for with the railroad situation. Leaving all the old ties along the tracks in which the area farmers wanted to burn, but once they jump into the railroad property and start burning, we cannot get to them as wet as the ground is. We had one pal who went to county today and it wasn't good. Sioux counties have the same predicament. If you follow the tracks east to west, ties are piled all over the states. Responders away from jobs too bad is something that should not be there. They just want railroad ties are piled along the tracks or a fire hazard.
There's nothing we can do. It's their ground.
Yeah, so right. Where they had three calls yesterday, two EMS and one fire. It's hard to maintain a real job to do this. Don't want it to be a thing, but I did get my drug once again, so.
I have to send a railroad to bill.
Yeah. I totally bring it up. At least catch their attention anyways.
Any other things for public discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Some of.
Motion by Whacter. Second by.
I'll second.
Stecker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Who's still coming in?
Oh, that's later. You can press that. That's later. I'm looking for that to.
Okay. We have a handwritten claim. Claims.
It's a credit card bill.
Somebody on the front.
Lori was waiting for, or somebody was waiting for a couple of receipts, so. That's why it's a handwritten claim.
Go ahead. I'm gonna let him look at the claims before we vote.
Yeah.
Well, tell me your trouble.
Yeah. Ready?
Yep.
Here's your statements.
Be terrible. Got grape in it today?
Ah, pink lemon. No, just red lemon.
Cold water.
Yeah.
I can sign it first.
Let me know if I want to. Uh, for registration.
What's on here?
I just got back from yesterday with a bunch of money during the draft copy.
Yeah. That's good.
Yeah. I'm gonna send out another email making sure nobody has anything last night. And then I just gotta get what fund we gotta put the money in for the bill for the, I think it's for his beautiful. Um, I tried calling him yesterday.
Yeah.
He was here and then I tried.
Probably for that account.
He wasn't there, so I'll try again.
Oh, that was just mad. The picture was, yeah, the picture was mad.
Yeah, okay.
This is for. Yeah, it's for that his.
Maybe I thought you were asking.
Yeah, you got that money.
Yeah, so that's.
Sure.
To, uh, yeah.
So, um, um, yeah, I'm wondering if we have to create a new, for that grant, a new expense for money for that grant, because a lot of times when you have current money, you have to pay for it so that it can be tracked. So I need you to help with that.
You want that underneath his fund though?
Yeah, I don't come out.
Surprise paper book did hold on.
But we might have to have like, like for Arpa, we have seven hundred. And for the earlier ones, we had one eighty-five, so we need to know if we need to identify it like that.
I think you will.
Yeah.
Otherwise you can't track it.
Yeah, so that's what I need to find out from him. And then, and then we should be able to get one. Then we can get it published. So we started it.
Did you go through the quarterly reports?
I did ask Dan Goons yesterday because his commission approved his on Thursday. And so I didn't get it until after I scanned the packet. So his is in there now.
Yeah, I had seen that in there last night.
How many years are they supposed to be good for?
Is it five or four?
It seems like this is the third one I've seen here.
It would be.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not as good as long as I think. It, you can see like a year that rotates like.
Well, it starts at twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Roll it back one, see what the last year is.
Last one quit at twenty-two.
Yeah, the other one quit at twenty-two.
We had the dates right. Wrong year.
Not the wrong one.
That's, that Carter's just adder.
Yeah, it's just, oh, it caught me too.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I see. Like, why would she need a full set? Okay.
Yeah, no, she would add her truck.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Well, I cannot read what that says, because it looks to me like it says twenty sixty-four, but that cannot be right.
That can't be right.
So I don't know what that says.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, so it's.
Ten years?
Eleven years.
Eleven years.
Twenty-three to thirty-four, that'd be eleven.
Be eleven years.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
Well, this one's gonna be good until you guys are dead.
Well, not.
That's not that long.
Yeah.
I was wondering who was gonna say something.
I caught that right away.
Nobody. It took a while for that to catch on.
No, it didn't take that long. That was a couple of seconds.
I can see the gears grinding though.
Let's see. Yeah, I wouldn't even be close to retirement one day.
Yeah.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve the handwritten claims?
So does.
Carter? Second by Stacker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have in our packet.
Just the front page to sign, right, Tammy?
Yeah, just the front.
Oh, yeah.
We have the quarterly reports.
We weren't signing it. Oh, or.
Quarterly reports in the auditor recorder sheriff and veteran affairs. Is there any discussion on any of the quarterly reports?
Looking all over.
Would someone like a motion to approve the quarterly reports? Is that Jack?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second.
Carter?
Josh.
Josh.
Thank you.
Second by Josh. Any discussion on the quarterly reports? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
It looks like individual, like the sheriff, he has, he has this, that he has or we've signed it as.
We just sign it. Yeah. And you just need to sign that one. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll pass it out, let you get a sign in.
So, we're gonna do this later until Phil comes in too. Discussion on stick lead.
Yeah, we're not doing that. You're jumping ahead.
I'm ju, oh, I'm jumping away. Yeah. Sorry, forgot I turned the page.
You're fine.
So we're gonna do economic development next.
No, time and date, just a budget amendment.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, yep. That's what we're doing on there.
You're ahead of it and you're packed with it.
Yeah, I know. Computers behind. Everybody got a sign?
Yeah, Carter just brought it down to Tammy.
Thank you, Carter.
Yep. Next up on the agenda is budget and certification of tax by resolution four twenty-five twenty-three oh.
Nope, you're ahead.
We do this up here.
You're on the wrong page.
The budget amendment here.
You're on the wrong page.
I got you on the wrong page.
You skipped the page.
That's how I got on the wrong page.
Now you s, did you put those in the wrong order, didn't you?
I'll find out when I get there.
Next page will be at the bottom of the agenda.
There it is.
Yeah, there we're at. Now, now it's the same as a computer.
You're gonna drain it.
No, here, you're, you're a long ways ahead.
Are you trying to?
We're trying to get done. There we are. Yeah. There it is.
That's, well, that's what we're.
Yep.
You're like twenty pages ahead.
Well, we're gonna get done, man.
Efficiency.
Yeah.
We'll have to have a discussion decision to approve the date and time for the FY twenty twenty-two twenty-three budget amendment hearing.
Um, I sent you guys an email yesterday with kind of a draft copy of the amendment. We've been working on that. Um, I'm gonna send out another email to the department heads to make sure we're not missing anything. And then I just have to talk to Phil about if we need to set up a new account for the money for the grant money. So, um, otherwise, that's kind of where it's looking at. If you have any questions, let me know. Um, but I'd like to set, um, the date and time for May sixteenth at eight thirty-eight.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carter. Again, the motion is to set the date for the budget amendment hearing at May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at eight thirty. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimous.
Good morning.
Good morning. Next on the agenda is to approve the elected officials' compensation schedule by resolution four twenty-five twenty-three oh one. It's in your packet. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Any discussion on salaries for elected officials? Anybody wanna make a change in it? Now's the time to do it. Seeing none, who is going to make the motion to approve resolution four twenty-five twenty-three oh one?
So move.
Carter? I need a second to that motion.
I'll second.
Whacter? Any discussion on, uh, salaries of elected officials? Seeing none. Roll call both, please.
Flash.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
No.
You voted for it in the first place.
I know. Can't be unanimous. We can't be in that. We're bigger than that, can we?
I wasn't gonna give you that hard on the time. Just wanted to remind you.
You can't sign it under the name.
Oh, Roger, you signed it on the wrong side.
No, you signed it on the.
You signed it on the right side.
That's it. You voted that way. So I was.
Hmm.
So.
Don't wipe it out.
Yeah. Yeah.
I do it wrong on the right side.
Did you cross the title or did you want white out? Here's white out if you want white out.
Yeah, that probably.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, that was my bad. That probably would be a little better here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Gordon.
Oh, wait, are you?
White out.
They're at the diner store.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, did you hear that?
Yeah, she did tell me.
Oh, the big one is theirs.
So fun that you guys stopped. Huh? So fun that you guys stopped.
I know, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had gone to a training that morning and so we ate lunch and said, let's go play at her new store.
Yeah, yeah, she was so happy.
She's got so much space.
I know, isn't it wonderful? She loves it. She absolutely loves it. So, and she's doing so well and it's like, you know, she's so good at it.
Oh, yeah. She is. It looks like it just comes natural.
It does. The rest of us would have to work in it.
Yeah, and I know I would make it look that good.
Oh, yeah, you would have skipped right over.
I would have skipped right over the most important thing today.
We've got almost a ten minute break.
We wouldn't let you, Roger.
Ah, don't worry. You talk so softly, nobody's gonna hear anything.
You need a microphone and a loudspeaker on.
When you give your husband or he turns your back on him, does he even hear?
He says he doesn't hear. I mean, he, he's always saying that I don't tell him things, but I do. And he says that I talk too quiet. I think he's just bad.
Selective.
Yeah.
No, my, my sister will not let anyone say selective hearing around her. It's selective listening.
Oh.
Well, because she's an audiologist.
You hear everything. It's whether I'm listening to it or not. I've said that a number of times and she's told me already.
It's water.
Last time my wife accuses me of, I'm gonna correct her.
You, you're gonna correct her?
You, you might have a different reason though. Exactly.
Hey, I, I thought she was expecting. The hormones are probably, you know, a little bit more, you know, you might wanna rethink what you do right now.
Josh, you might wanna be careful.
Yeah.
Sleep with both eyes open instead of just. I think I'm gonna top off late before we get too far here, since we've got.
We got five minutes.
It's fair. Seven, actually.
We'll get one small.
Just one? Just one?
I guess I have this again. And I have it on, I have it in my.
Christmas. Oh, Christmas of July. Yeah.
But it's the same day, is it?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, that is the right one.
Just show up in July.
Because of the, I was gonna, I have the invitation for the other one to ask you guys all.
Twenty-two, May, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I have, I put it in my folder to talk to you guys today so I can RSVP.
Oh, gotcha. It's, it's, it's not horrible. I don't think it's as convenient as, you know, anger or support. There's a lot of congestion there.
I hope that's not. What day was it?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, no, I won't be gone.
No way to get anything in there.
I was afraid it was.
I'm gone following.
And you.
If you wanna put that down, I will be gone. First August.
Just that they.
Uh, I'll be gone Sunday, Friday.
Not that it matters, but that way I kind of.
No, I won't be gone that week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotta hold the auger up underneath.
And convince them to walk.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think I'm around everywhere.
I know we go on the first week in August, that's when we take our. The invigoration. We just go to the cabin after. But I, that's our, our the invigoration.
I had some get a little bit wet all the time and I was, once I, once I struck out the corner around on the bottom, auger to the action, bring it to the center, and then it chucked off. Rock and roll all the time. Yikes.
Yeah.
Is that course from twenty fifteen or what? You must have water. You have a transfer. Yeah, you got something leaking there.
Yeah.
That, that bad. Debbie's gonna be there, huh? Economic.
So it wouldn't let me.
No water, water.
Yeah.
It doesn't want to do.
The coops got. The well chief's there.
Yeah.
And I did the, the three try.
They got carried away on that table. They scratch it.
What?
They got carried away on that table. They're scratching.
I saw, yeah, that, that's been there for a while, I think.
So we ran gas station for a while. Those in here. No.
No.
We had employee, one employee that we were losing money a lot of tickets. And I said, there's no way you can lose money.
Unless they're stealing it.
Yeah, so we went through the tapes and there was one cashier that was stealing it. She said, but I paid for the ones where I won.
Yeah, when you know your guarantee of profit.
I couldn't believe it. Sitting there talking with the sheriff and I said, oh my God.
That's, that's a sad excuse. I thought she could have came up with something better than that.
Yep, I'll never forget that.
Honesty is the best policy.
Yeah, if I won that day, she'd say.
I got it, I got it. Okay, I'll put it on it. And the funny thing is, I put in my file to talk to you guys today to finalize RSVPs for the one.
It's getting closer.
That's a new one.
We're, we're not there yet. I can read that one. It is eight thirty. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
And we got a lot of conversation shared.
Jack, it's eight thirty. I couldn't see through the polls.
I know, and that means it closes opening from.
It is eight thirty. I will need a motion to open the public hearing for FY twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll move to open it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Waxter. Do a whole poll vote, please.
Everyone, we're gonna open the public hearing.
Okay, class, Nat?
Yes.
Waxter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes. Would the auditor please do the budget presentation?
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. So, good morning, and welcome, um, to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget public hearing. Um, again, I'd like to thank Doug and Adam at the engineering office, um, for ten plus years, they helped put this presentation together. The auditor's office give them the information, and they do the rest, and so without them, this would be a much longer process for us, and we really appreciate it, Doug, so thank you, and please thank Adam.
I will.
And so I will start with, if you turn to the first page, or after the introduction page, I'll start with our current fiscal year tax example. So if you look at the pie graph on the left-hand side, it shows the property tax distribution from a property in the city of Algonah. Forty-six point nine percent of that tax goes to the city of Algonah, thirty-one point one percent goes to the Algonah school, fourteen point four percent goes to Pecus County, and the county trust receives four point four percent, and the community college each receives three point two percent. The pie graph on the right-hand side shows the house property tax distribution from a property in Burton Township. Fifty-one point four percent goes to the Algonah school, thirty-two point four percent goes to Pecus County, seven four, seven point five percent goes to the county trust, five point four to community college, and three point three to the township. If you turn to the next page, this next slide shows our revenue details for twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The numbers that I'll be going through are under budget twenty-three, twenty-four on the right-hand side of the page. The taxes levied on the property for twenty-three, twenty-four will be ten million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, fourteen dollars. Less credit to taxpayers of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, which brings the net current property taxes to ten million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Penalties, interest, and cost on taxes of twenty-two thousand dollars, other county taxes of seven thousand dollars, local option taxes of one million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, tip tax revenues of hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-eight dollars, utility replacement taxes, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, which brings the subtotal to one million, nine hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Our intergovernmental revenue, our state shared revenue, six million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, our state replacements against levy taxes of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, our other state tax replacements of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, our state federal passing revenues of seventy-five thousand dollars, our contributions from other governmental units, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred dollars, state grants and entitlements of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, our payment in lieu of taxes, eight thousand dollars, which brings a subtotal to seven million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Our licenses and permits at twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars, our charters for services, one million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, use of money and property, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Our miscellaneous, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, which brings our total revenues up to twenty-two million, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Other financing sources is operating transfers in from general basic of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, from rural services basic of two million, five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars, which brings a subtotal to two million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, press proceeds from general long-term debt of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, proceeds from general fixed asset sales of thirty thousand dollars, which brings total res, total revenue and other sources of twenty-five million, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars, and then if you add in the beginning fund balance from July first of twenty-twenty-three of thirteen million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, our total resources for fiscal year twenty-four, thirty-eight million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. We'll go on to the next page. Um, I'm gonna break down our expenditures by service area. The first service area that we're gonna cover is service area one, which is public safety and legal services. This includes ambulance, county attorney, district court, medical examiner, and sheriff, and I'll just be reading the subtotals in each category. Our law enforcement program expenditures will be three million, six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, our legal services program, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, emergency services, two million, fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, assistance to district court system, one thousand, fifty dollars, court proceedings program, twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, juvenile justice administration program, thirty-one thousand, which brings our total public safety and legal services to six million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. We'll go on to the next page, which is service area three, with fiscal health and social services, which includes general assistance, human services, mental health and general basic, algebraage, sanitary maintenance, and veterans of fakers. Our physical health services program budget for fiscal year twenty-four, one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, service to the poor program, ninety-three thousand, fifty-six dollars, services to military veterans program, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars, children and family services program, eight thousand dollars, services to other adults program, fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, chemical dependency program, five thousand, five hundred dollars, for a total physical health and social services budget of three hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. If you remember, we no longer have service area four for mental health, so we'll go on to service area six, which is county environment and education. This includes conservation, nature center, fair, historical society, libraries, and media commissioner. Environmental, environmental quality program, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, conservation and recreation services program, seven hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, county development program, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, educational services program, three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, which brings service area six total to one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The next slide is service area seven, which is roads and transportation. Um, this includes the engineer and secondary road. Secondary roads administration and engineering program, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, two dollars, roadway maintenance program, five million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, general roadway expenditures program, three million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which brings the total for service area seven to ten million, four hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Service area six is government services to residents, which includes elections, township clerks and trustees, recorder, and treasurer. The representation service program, one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, state administrative services, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, which brings the total to one million, ninety-two thousand, forty-six dollars. Service area nine is administration, which includes the annex, auditor, courthouse, election center expenses, custodians, ITGIS, unemployment, CPA audit, supervisors, and human resources. The policy and administration program, one million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars, central services program, one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, risk management services program, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which brings the total for service area nine to three million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Our last service area, service area zero, is our non-program expenditures, disbursements, and other financing uses. This includes conservation, REAP, conservation reserve, crisis intervention, transit, technical services, care team, ISAC, RSVP, and tourism. For non-program current expenditures, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, capital projects, three million, twelve thousand, two hundred and, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, which brings the total expenditures to twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Our operating transfers out will be two million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, and our total ending fund balance on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, nine million, ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, which makes our total expenditures thirty-eight million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. If you go on to the next slide, I'm gonna break down the estimated revenue for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So where does our revenue come from? Thirty-seven point three percent comes from our beginning balance, twenty-nine point seven percent comes from our property tax, twenty-two point five percent comes from intergovernmental sources, five point four percent comes from other taxes, three point nine percent from charge of service, point seven percent miscellaneous, and point five percent use of money. So, including the beginning fund balance, our total revenue is thirty-five million, three hundred and eighteen, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our estimated expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four on the next slide tells us where our money is going. So twenty-nine point four percent goes to roads and transportation, twenty-five point eight percent is our ending balance, eighteen point three percent public safety, ten percent administration, eight point seven percent non-program and capital projects, three point seven county environment, three point one government services, one percent health and social services, which brings our total expenditures to thirty-five, uh, million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Okay, so now I'm gonna break down, um, our expenditures minus the ending fund balance. So if we take the ending fund balance out, where does that leave us? Thirty-nine point seven percent goes to roads and transportation, twenty-four point six to public safety, thirteen point five to administration, eleven point seven non-program expenditures, five percent county environment, four point two percent government services, one point three health and social services, which brings our total expenditures without, um, that to twenty-six million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Our estimated beginning balance for July first, twenty-twenty-three equals thirteen million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Thirty-nine point eight percent secondary road, thirty-five point four two zero in general fund, twenty-one point seven in rural services, three point eight zero in others, um, which brings that estimated beginning balance to thirteen million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. On the next slide, our estimated ending balance on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, which seems like a long ways away, equals nine million, ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, thirty-six point three seven percent in rural service, thirty-five point five seven percent general fund, twenty-five point two four percent secondary roads, and two point eight two percent in others. In our next slide, I'm gonna be talking about tax levy examples for the city of Algonah for the current fiscal year, which is twenty-two, twenty-three. This tax example shows that house assessed at a hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Times the state rollback of point five four one three zero two equals a fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollar and forty-one cents taxable valuation, times a thirty-four point two seven, um, per thousand mileage rate equals one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and two cents. You subtract the home state credit of a hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-one cents, you get a net tax of one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Of that eighteen value, for one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents, forty-six point eight eight percent goes to the city of Algonah, thirty-one point zero three percent goes to the Algonah schools, nine point seven two percent goes to county general basic, four point two zero goes to county general supplemental, three point two four to the community college, colleges, three point one five to the hospital, point eight one percent to the assessor, point four nine percent county rural services, point four seven percent egg extension, and point zero one percent state levies. Now we'll look at, uh, a levy example for Burton Township for this current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We look at a hundred and sixty acres at one thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, um, an acre, equals two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, forty dollars. Assess value at point eight nine zero four one two zero state rollback equals two hundred, two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. You multiply that by the mileage rate of twenty dollars, point six three two zero three per thousand, you get four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-five cent total tax. If you subtract the ag land and family farm credit of two hundred and thirty-four dollars and four cents, you get a total net tax of three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Of that net tax, fifty-one point five five goes to the school district, sixteen point nine sec, nine six goes to county general basic, eight point four eight goes to county rural services, six point nine eight goes to county general supplemental, five point three eight goes to the area colleges, five point two three to the hospital, three point two nine to the townships, one point three four to the assessor, point seven eight egg extension, and point zero one state levies. The last item that we're gonna talk about today on your last page is past current and proposed tax examples. So our past tax example is for twenty-one, twenty-two. A rural property with a value of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, with a mileage rate of six point nine 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 one six per thousand dollars of valuation, is figured to one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents of tax. Our current tax example for that same property, rural property has a value of two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, with a mileage rate of six point six nine zero five zero per thousand dollars of valuation, is figured to one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-four cents of tax. This is a decrease from the previous year of forty-one dollars and ninety percent, which is a change of minus three point zero one percent. Now, if we go to our proposed tax example for twenty-three, twenty-four on that same property, a rural property will have a value of two hundred and eight thousand, ninety-six dollars, with a mileage rate of seven point one six zero 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 per thousand dollars of valuation, is figured to one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents of tax. This is a change from the previous year of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, which is a change of ten point one four percent. Now, if we go to a property in town, in the city of Algonah, was a value of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, at a mileage rate of five point one seven nine six two per thousand dollars of valuation, is figured to two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eight cents of tax. If we take that same property in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the value will be fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents, with a mileage rate of four point nine four zero six two per thousand dollars of valuation, is figured to two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents of tax. This is a change from the previous year of seven dollars and sixty-six cents, which is a change of two point seven six percent. Now, if we go on that same property for fiscal year twenty-two, or twenty-three, twenty-four, the rural, or that property in town will have a value of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents, with a mileage rate of five point five eight zero 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 per thousand dollars of valuation, which is figured to three hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents of tax. This is a change from the previous year of forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, which is a change of sixteen point three five percent. which is a change of sixteen point three five percent. And that finishes our presentation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Are there any questions?
Any public comments? Any comments from the board? Can't see behind the polls, nobody raised their hand?
Here, and then I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second to close the public here? Carter? Stecker made the motion, Carter second. We will do a roll call vote, please.
Plath? Nash? Wachter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Drucks?
Yes. We are up to certification of a tax resolution number four twenty-five, twenty-three, oh two for FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Again, the resolution number is four twenty-five, twenty-three, oh two. I would need a motion to approve the resolution. I'll move to approve the resolution, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Stecker. Comments on the resolution number? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Drucks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. For approval approval of public purpose for economic development expenditures by resolution four twenty-five, twenty-three, oh three, do I have any questions on the proposed resolution of four twenty-five, twenty-three, oh three? If not, I would need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd move to approve it.
Motion by Stecker?
I'll second.
Second by Wachter, discussion. Seeing none, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Plath?
Yes.
Nash? Wachter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Yes. Next, I would need a motion to approve the paperwork and authorize the chair to sign the binder agreement.
We've got update for EMS on the agenda next.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, sorry, that's where, yeah.
Okay, we gotta move that to the right order. Okay, discussion to approve sick leave for the city of Algonah. Casouth County EMS?
EMS update.
Phil, EMS update? Oh, I got it. We're just all in the wrong order today.
Update, um I didn't prepare anything for updates, and I didn't realize I was on there till this morning, my front off my agenda. Still working through the process of making the change, I mean that's basically what's going on right now, so.
Everything working out?
Everything's going good so far.
Good.
Lot of lot of time issues that are a challenge getting all the parties together to get things accomplished, but we're working through those and making progress, so. Get a lot of things crossed off, but not for the list of things to do, but still plenty of plenty left. We have a meeting tonight, advisory council meeting's tonight, five o'clock. Those are open to public, so anybody's welcome to attend.
Anything on the agenda that's interesting?
Um, we're gonna go through those policies, fifty of them, forty, whatever
Yeah.
of them there is. Um, looking at trying to finish up on the getting stuff put together for the hiring, app raising hires of the staff, so. Those are gonna be two main things on the agenda for twenty.
Have you started advertising yet, or no?
No. I'm hoping to get that out this week um on the agenda today, and then tonight we'll kind of wrap up everything, so we can get that published and get together with Donna, so we can start putting together packets to have for for benefits for everybody.
Yep.
We are up to done. The binder agreement.
Binder agreement, um I don't know if I even need the chair. Here's the final rates as we discussed last week. Coverage, and then the signature page for the binder agreement to send to Walmart.
Need one more copy?
You can have mine.
There might be one, you can have another one.
Oh, no, there's there's two here.
I was gonna say, I thought I made it, no. But sometimes I can't handle.
Roger here, Roger's hiding two of them.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Anybody have any questions on the insurance rate? It's what we discussed at length.
We did not change anything. Do you recommend?
We we set those rates during the budget process.
We didn't go up at all.
Yeah, we did go up.
Well, we're budgeting, we're budgeting, we changed, but the policy did not change.
Policy did not change, but our budget from last year to this fiscal year going forward will will change.
Is this correct?
This is what you discussed last week as far as the overall policy. You set the rates that we were gonna budget. Like March.
Yeah, February, March, we set those.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the picture for work. Authorize the chair to sign the binder agreement. Carter? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stecker, second. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. You need to tell me to sign yet.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Got anything else on insurance, Donna?
I don't think so.
Evidently not.
Oh, she's talking to Todd on that, so.
Phil, this is back on the agenda again, sick leave from the city of Algonah, Casouth County EMS staff. I thought we had this settled once.
We did, but we tabled it.
We tabled the sick leave portion.
Um, cuz you asked to send more information to the payroll attorney, uh which we did.
Yeah.
So we have put back on the agenda to make final decisions, so we tabled that, is the way I understood it, so. I know that was sent in, I haven't received any emails or any correspondence from them.
Melissa sent you an email?
What's that?
Melissa sent you an email from the payroll to, or from her response from the payroll attorney?
No. I got one for the uh pay scale, but not from the sick leave thing.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, well, we'll have to check, but she said that she sent you that.
Anyway, I know you guys had a phone call with them, um so.
Jack and I talked to the payroll attorney with the auditor and Melissa.
And you guys had a phone call with them, I didn't
Yeah.
will need to have a copy of the email at that point, so.
Yeah, it was, it's highly unlikely ever that anybody's able to carry sick leave over from one job to a different job, so. Jack, is that the general consensus that we got from him that he'd never heard of doing it before, so.
And you gotta look at the bigger picture, they're gonna pick up eight hours in the first month of sick leave. They're probably getting better insurance plan than what they had before. They're carrying, they're bringing their, I believe they're bringing in their vacation, right?
Yep, up to the forty hours per handbook, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, when you, you know, if you change, it's a change, it's a job change. If any of us went to a different job, we'd be faced with the same same thing, I mean, that's just just a fact.
Yeah. I would make a motion not to approve of sick leave being carried over from the city to the county. Any discussion?
I had meant to call the payroll attorney yesterday, but had other things come up, so I was not able to, but I guess I'll go with your description of the call, and I I guess for me, the only way I see that we could do it is if it was paid by the city of Algonah, so have you had any conversations with them?
They're they're not gonna pay out benefits, it's not viable.
Then then I think our hands are tied that way.
I, even if they would, I think the city would have to pay it out in cash, and it wouldn't affect the county.
Exactly, that's that's my point. It would it would have to be a neutral effect on the county for us to take on that liability, I believe. And unless that happens, I don't see how we can.
No, I don't either. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous.
Next one is policies.
Yeah, I just had that down as a discussion, uh we're not ready to motion on that yet. I did send you guys all a copy of the of the policies we're gonna be reviewing tonight at the meeting. Um, I did divide those into three separate categories. The first category was state forms, uh our hands are pretty much tied on those, you know, following the state guidelines, and those have to be approved by the state. So those have all been sent into the state for their approval. Uh, the second ones as well is is from the board of pharmacy, from the head of board pharmacy, those have to be sent to the board of pharmacy for approval, how we operate under the board pharmacy. So basically, those first two categories, um there's not a lot of change we can do on those, unless you see something that looks obviously wrong for the county, then we can we can bring that up for discussion, and I can have a conversation with those parties to get it corrected appropriately. Last one is more of our personal policies that we have. I have talked to Donna on some of those, there is a couple of those that we will not continue to go forward with, because my goal is to have as line as much akin with the with the county handbook and not have separate policies in place. So there was one, the return to work policy, and then there was another one that was
Record retention.
that I pull out. Um, I did already pull out a social media one that we had in place. Algonah's, let's say, Algonah's handbook didn't address um these policies very well, so we had our own EMS policies in place because we didn't have anything, any guidelines to follow, so. So I did share the social media one with Derek, he's gonna incorporate that into his social media policy, a couple of things that we had that he didn't, so um we won't have a separate one there. And then the ones that Donna and I talked to as well.
Drug and alcohol.
Drug and alcohol policy, with different, little different lines in there, but we're gonna combine those, the rest of them um is kind of in-house policies that we have, and I don't like to overpolicy things, but there's times when you have to have some policies in place to to stay efficient, so. I'm not gonna say that's the end of them, but um it's kind of our starting point for to get the system in place.
Well, it's nice that they match the handbook as close as possible to all the other policies that we have, cuz we got too many policies that, we have policies on policies.
And that's our goal, is to stay as close as we can with the handbook, and um there's a couple of things that we do different, you know, our our crews come in, run twenty-four hour shifts around, they're in-house for, you know, two, three days at a time, so we do have a visitor policy where we do allow families to come in and have a meal with them, or some stuff like that. So we did have to put a policy in place for that, because we did have a a person that did abuse that a little bit, um so we did have to put a policy in place to kind of correct those actions. That person isn't with us anymore, but we're gonna keep policy in place just in case you never know we're here. So.
So today, we're not gonna act on anything on that?
Those are what I'm hoping, we're gonna discuss those today, tonight at the meeting. Hopefully, I can have those on the agenda for next Tuesday, um for approval, get those finished up, so I can start getting signatures. Some of those state forms require signatures from all all the communities in the county, so to get those approved, so I can start going around to the different communities and get all the signatures in place. I did share those with with Todd as well.
Donna, you have anything?
I think we discussed it yesterday and agree with the keeping it simplified in the book.
So tonight, you're going to act on it, at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's gonna be on the agenda?
They've actually had them for a couple of weeks, our week. They had a rough draft sent to them, so they had a rough draft. They have a time of rest, so hopefully it doesn't take us all night to go through these. We do have the the first version of the um asset transfer and the somewhat of the lease for the for the building, well, we'll look at those tonight, too, to try to.
I need to talk to you after you're done here, too, because I think there needs to be a slight change to the agreement, but the sublease, the signing of leases, that's fine reform, that's fine. After I get it done, I'll forward it to the board, too, after I meet with.
Sounds good.
Anything else on the subject?
Not today.
Not today? Then we'll jump to the next one.
We got the northern.
The Northern Hub representative for Casouth County.
In the packet, I did include a copy of the of the minutes from the Soy City Council meeting.
Yeah.
Um, they had the first council meeting, they actually, if you remember, they appointed two people um to the board. So they went back and revisited it, the person that they had chosen to appoint it um both failed at the second council meeting. Uh, they did not vote for the second person they had chose the first time, they just bypassed that, picked the third person, so I guess this is what we have from them at this point. They either accept it or deny it based on that.
And the person is, for the record?
Uh, the person that was appointed is Lupe Colash.
Anybody have any questions on the appointee before I take a motion?
I guess just for everyone's knowledge on this, at the last EMS meeting, the council member that was appointed here was in attendance in addition to the mayor, and sounded like they had gone through everything together, but the council had not voted for the mayor in the first motion here, it looks like from the minutes, so I guess I don't don't know what to think about that, but.
I guess it's not up to us, it's up to the city of Soy City, so.
Well, it is our final decision, but.
Yes, but we still have to respect the
Yeah.
wishes of Soy City. So I would entertain a motion to put Lupe Colash as the EMS System Advisory Council member. Jack, would you make a motion? Plath, second. Wachter?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Posed, motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Keep us informed.
Will do.
Next on the agenda is a discussion to approve the three-year contract with Cost Advisory Services, Inc. For FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five.
This is something we do every three years, this is the same company we've used for, I don't, I'm not sure how long, but, um, this is something required.
I think they do about ninety-seven counties.
There are a couple of counties that use something else, but they do the majority of the counties.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, here, like, ninety-three.
But I just note from memory that they did ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on the motion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Carter? Plath, second. Any discussion on the motion? Being it's a three-year contract, we'll do a roll call vote.
Plath?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes. Stecker? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion about supervisory meetings and mileage expenses and expenses going out of the county. Um, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment, we're way over on expenses this year, so I thought we would have some discussion on it.
Four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Um, that's quite a bit over. I'm in the past, when Jack and I were first on the board, if you were gonna go anywhere and went to the full board and you voted on it, at least made a gentleman's agreement between the five of us that we were going to participate in something outside of the county. Uh, your thoughts?
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, the wall committee is one trip that was made by one member to Washington DC for over three thousand dollars. Hasn't been shown a presenting value to the county taxpayers, spent that kind of money to go out there, hasn't been anything reported that shows value to you know, to the, to the taxpayers, so. It's like we need to, we need to be responsible to our taxpayers and watch over spam. Some things like that, I just don't think they're worth it.
I could make a suggestion, um, you know, as far as, like, you know, we should all have the opportunity, and we do have the opportunity to, um, we need people to lobby federal government to go down to the state house to talk to the legislatures and all that sort of thing. However, I, I think a suggestion I would have would be moving forward next year, say, a board member would like to go to Washington DC or would like to go to the state house or something, or, you know, I mean, we talked about ISA conference or whatever it is, you know, um, I, I think should present something to do with, here's my approximate, or my estimated cost of what this will be. Or for example, like, um, you know, when you had hotel last week, that was an extraordinary thing. You know, nobody's gonna say, no, we won't allow that, but you know, just to, just to say, hey, I'm thinking about doing this, or I'm thinking about going on a trip to DC and this is what I'd like to accomplish, and this is about how much it's gonna cost. How do you guys think, and, and discuss it as a board, and then say, yeah, yeah, we'd like you to go ahead and do that. Or, you know, maybe this, we should wait another year to do this, or whatever it is, you know, I, I think it would be good to, I think it would, wouldn't, uh, I guess wouldn't bring about as much confusion or as, uh, then we all know what's going on and nobody, everybody's on the same page that way. I, I guess, does that make sense?
Well, I don't like supervisors doing a budget amendment on their own budget. We can't follow our own budget or something wrong.
And, and we do have a five thousand dollar spending limit for department heads, and we are department heads, and I understand that. But, you know, just, I guess that's just my suggestion moving forward, maybe let's just discuss it all as a board and decide if that's something we wanna go ahead and do.
Well, the other thing is, we're, we act as one, we don't act individually. There's no decision made by any board member except in drainage that is really official, cause we're supposed to be acting as a unit.
But I mean, this, as far as voting official, I mean, we can still go out and do things, and as a department head, you know, I would, we would make, making the decision on our own for anything, but.
Yeah, well, when it comes to spending money, we still should be cohesive and agree on it.
I guess I would go back to, um, previous budgets where I have suggested we model what Clay County does, where each supervisor comes up with their individual budget for the year, and then that gets combined into a total for the group. So they can choose what they anticipate going to, there's still flexibility if one does attend this or another doesn't attend that, but it would give each individual the opportunity to plan that out and have that group conversation when we do set the budget, but that idea has been refused previously and we just threw a lump sum together. Um, I believe the year previous, we went over as well. Um, don't remember if we did a budget amendment for that or if we just left it go over since it was within the service area.
Well, we have to do a budget amendment if you go over.
Only if you can go over for the line item, but not the service area, correct, Tammy?
Right, and our, or department.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I guess considering we just approved the budget for this next year, I would suggest we, any changes that are made impact the following budget when we would have time to appropriately plan for that.
That, that's true. I think that's a, I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, and that's kind of what I'm saying is,
That's, that's what.
Here's, here's what I would like to do this year, you know, there's about what I'm planning, thinking of that's gonna cost. What do you guys think of this? Is this something we wanna pursue as a board, that have me go and do this?
I still think if you're going to spend four thousand dollars as a board member, it should be okay by the rest of the.
I think that's what we're saying, you know, this is what, as part of the budget, this is what I'd like to do in the coming year. Um, you know, I'm going to Des Moines, I'm going to DC, I'm going to this conference or whatever, going to this meeting, and then we can either approve or not approve of that. I, I mean, we would still be approving as a board the budget of our, what we'd like to do in the coming year and adjust accordingly. I, I think that's fair.
And, and that's where my point would be, that conversation should be during the budget process, um, we've got.
We probably missed that this year, but.
Exactly.
Are you anything about that?
We, these other departments that we need to do budget amendments for because their anticipated expenditures are going over those line items that were originally planned, I mean, how would you separate that from our line items? We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in certain areas that are over their line items, so.
And I fully realize that, but you are setting an example for the rest of the county on how we operate and how we do our businesses. So I think we should do it as exactly as possible and expect that from the rest of the people that.
I, I agree with that, but I would, I, I think the time for that would be at the budget process.
We should have known that.
We probably should set a dollar amount of, you know, the maximum that supervisor can, can, you know, spend on a, on a meeting or a trip.
Yeah.
And if, if, if it's gonna be higher than that, then it has to come for the, to the entire board to, for approval.
I, I think it's fairly clear that's targeting me because I've gone outside of the state to multiple meetings, so.
I mean, good or bad, it is kind of the reason that it's over, you know, I mean, I, I guess that's just a fact, but, but, uh.
I'm not trying to target anybody, I'm just saying that.
We need to go about it right.
We need to go and follow our own advice for the rest of the county and, and we all know the state is gonna pass the mandatory reduction in what we can tax, and so how are we gonna pay for it?
Maybe a little bit helps, so, I, I, yeah, I.
And we're supposed to set a good example for the rest of the counties, so, that's just my speech.
Yep.
I don't know that we can act on anything today, but I would appreciate if you're gonna spend a lot of money, that you bring it to the board before you do it, that's my message.
In the coming year, at least make it a suggestion, here's what I'd like to do, and then in the following year, we can make that part of a budget if you'd like to do that.
Do we have a gentleman's agreement on that, I guess, what I'm saying?
Yeah, that would be fair, and I, I believe my trip to DC was mentioned in the boardroom multiple times. I don't know if anyone ever asked for a best made dollar amount, but that's something we can address moving forward.
I didn't really wanna bring up any individual today, I just think that we need to have some foresight. And, and hindsight on expenses that we bring to the board. If we can do that as a gentleman's agreement, I would think that that would be sufficient for this year. And we'll let the record show that. Doug? Thank you.
Is that sufficient?
Doug, we're up to construction right away next, if you're ready. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. You lost Jack.
Yeah, yeah, he just walked out.
I can't keep tracking him today. He's hiding behind a hole on me and now he left again.
Tim, this other one turned off when the, when we turned the lights out, this one can't handle the dark apparently. The owl, oh.
Owl, he went out.
Yeah, that was, that one's still going, so I think we're fine.
Do you ever hear a, hear an owl hoot in the dark? Usually it's in the, you know, dusk or dawn.
Well, apparently this one's afraid of the dark.
Evidently.
I guess.
Or just really tired in the dark.
It says it's still recording, so.
Yeah, cause that one's good, it's just this one lost the connection to it.
Maybe it's a barn owl and it likes the lights on.
Maybe.
And the funny part is, it's still showing you and Carter, it's still showing everybody.
Well, it's probably picking up off of that one.
It'll just come from the other angle.
Cause it might, is it looking right at me right now?
You, Kyle, and me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but is it, is it straight at him? Is he looking at the camera?
It's hard to tell.
Yeah.
I mean, no, it's, he's looking at me.
If I'm looking at this one.
You're looking at that one.
Yeah.
That must be on, it must be working.
No, it wasn't showing, it was just showing, it wasn't showing in front, it was just showing your side.
Yeah, so it.
Yeah, so that, that.
Morning, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
What a hoot.
What a joke.
I'm a dad, I can have the dad jokes.
Jack had the.
Maybe.
Okay.
Just knock it off, knock it off.
I can keep it with the order, it's information, maybe if you wanna just scan it, set it.
Okay, that was dark.
Try best that you, we need to kind of have a file now for the board.
Okay, and I will, do you want me to email it to Tim, too?
Yeah, why not, yeah, that'd be a good idea, so, very good, thank you.
We're, we're playing with the owl right now, Doug, so, yeah, it, it died.
Oh, it, it don't want to.
It wants to sleep.
Evidently.
Doug, we're up to construction in the right of way, I believe there was some.
There, yeah, one request, actually, this is something that we talked about last year, uh, last fall, Kenny Lubenthal, bringing a tile from an outlet quite a ways, uh, north, and he is going, he, actually, it's gone through three hundred and eighty street. We are waiting for some information on that and we received it, uh, talked with the board and the board was comfortable giving a verbal, so this will just be a formal action, we'll be able to get Kenny paid for, uh, the material and the labor and, uh, move forward with that.
So he brought a twenty-four through the road?
Um, there's two crossings, I believe, one is, uh, twenty-four inch and one is an eighteen inch.
Oh, he did both of them?
There's two, yeah, there's two different separate crossings.
And you said you got all the paperwork now?
Yes, we do.
You making a motion, Mr. Stecker? Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Carter, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous.
Then it's all of the road requests for ro- work in the road right away that we have. All right, thank you. Discussion?
With the county engineer and the administrator?
The bridge at Irvington now is complete, they have their guardrail on that. The approaches are still rock, but we hope to get those patched this year, along with the other projects last year that we, uh, completed and are rock. Uh, Merriman's are working on their bridge, they actually have all the substructure completed now, so they'll be, I think they got one row of falsehood piling to drive and they'll be putting up their decking and getting ready for deck port on that job. Elbona Airport Expansion Project, uh, that has been let, uh, Friday, so I do not know, uh, I do not know the status of it. I think the city is scheduled to act on that at their next council meeting, so. And we have a secondary road safety meeting on the twenty-first, and we still have, uh, two mechanics positions to fill. Today, uh, Blackout Services crap filling south of Lone Rock, and they'll be in the northern end of the county filling some roads that we planned to seal coat. So that's all the road department information, and then we, uh, Tammy and I, by email, talked a little bit with Tim Whipple last week. Tim is not available today, but we will have it on the agenda next week. Um, is that something you would like to, uh, have as a closed session?
I think it would be appropriate because we are talking about going into a legal issue.
We'll put it on the board's agenda for that, then.
Please, I think we should.
Twenty-one five.
Anybody disagree with that?
And we, Tammy and I will visit again by email, but we'll make sure that Tim is comfortable with that as well, he'll give us some guidance.
Cause he's gonna have to give us advice.
Yeah, yeah, his recommendation.
But, uh, we did say ten o'clock, is that correct?
I don't.
I'm correct, I'll, I'll review the email, but. Um, and that's all that I have.
Any discussion with Doug on anything? I see they're re- recovering shoulders on the Plum Creek Road a little bit.
We are out doing some different, uh, shoulder reclamation, yeah, both gravel and pavement roads, yes.
Uh, Doug, do you have a more of a status update on the mechanic's position with any number of applications or?
I received some applications, I don't know, uh, exactly that number, but I'm reviewing them, I'm in the process of reviewing it, yes.
If there's nothing else for Doug, I think we can jump up to the brush control, we'll skip one. We'll let him come up and introduce himself, means that we don't know him.
Can I, uh, get my, my?
Yeah.
So if you can just hold on and I'll swap with mine.
Still see one of that, so.
You'll make it, if you make it this far, you'll make it.
Yeah, I don't.
Morning.
Just a minute, we're gonna wait for Marge to come in.
Yeah, I don't, I can go ahead and introduce.
I'm Nate Reefer, Reefer, Don.
My dad, so.
Yeah, Don, very unexpected this year with Nate.
How you doing?
I made your name.
You too.
Roger Jarks, Kyle Stecker.
Kyle, nice to meet you.
Josh Wacker, Carter Nah, and Jack Plath. And Jack Pla.
Jack.
For me and, uh.
Sorry, yeah, sorry to hear about your dad, we always enjoyed him.
Yeah, he, he was, uh, quite the guy, he did this pretty well, so.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna miss.
His last figure it out is all on me, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I don't know, be nice to work with everybody and.
Yeah.
Continue doing the work that we do, so.
Rode a lot of miles with him looking at dredge ditches.
I believe it, I believe it, I think he put on like fifty, sixty thousand miles a year in a truck, so.
Yeah, you know Marge.
I have met Marge like one time, so I've been talking to her on the.
Yeah.
Through email or whatnot.
Yep.
Talk to you later, Nate.
Yep.
Thanks.
Now, Nate, I think I've asked you. There's a Reefer that runs track right now.
Yeah, my son.
That is your boy?
Yeah.
Oh, can he run as fast as he can?
Not anymore. Not even close.
He's doing, I hear his name on the hundred yard, two hundred meter, hundred meter.
Yeah, he did, they, uh, had a track meet last night, I was, they're all spread out so far, it was crazy.
Yeah.
You keep track of them half the time, so.
Anyway, well, I know his name on this, so now, you, you're, you also have another nephew that played football then.
They both play, they both play football, uh, my boys in track and then my nephew, two of my nephews are wrestlers.
Yeah, that's, yeah, wrestling, I heard that name.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we are gonna, first thing on the agenda with brush control, I think we'll let you take off, however you wanna present it.
Well, like, like Don's done in the past, just doing rotation stuff, uh, I've just been going through the records and. Kinda keeping the, the bids the same as I noticed he did the year, the quotes the same and, you know, always come underneath that. Fairly easily, but, uh, what we got is just the list of ditches for what we did in twenty twenty. Which we're gonna do in twenty twenty-three, you know, uh, I brought the maps for it, they're kind of throughout the cen- center of Cassuth County. And, uh, I think there's one. The HK eight we do with Humble, so that only, you know, that only goes into Cassuth County a few miles down by St. Joe. My boys just done that with Humble. But, uh, other than that, I went and looked around and all of them, they all look pretty good, uh. There is one that is, be this number one fourteen. I know the last time that we had worked on it, I don't know if s- some of the guys in the past hadn't been going far enough. But like more toward the east end, it was pretty brushy, so. If it's still in pretty rough shape. We might kinda set that one and just specifically do that with like our folier based products, I think most of the other ones can all be due with. Uh, oil based, you know, done by hand throughout either, any time of the year, basically, so. Uh, yeah, other than that, unless there's other, any of these that plan on being worked on, like if they're gonna get dredged out or dipped or. Anything like that?
So Drain four would have the, approximately the lower half. Okay. Just been cleaned out, so there shouldn't be much of anything.
Okay.
For half.
Yeah, I mean, we'll probably travel it anyways, but if there isn't anything on there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, down just south of Bancroft, yeah, I noticed they pulled, pulled a bunch of that out where he did the bank on it.
You're, you're gonna go ten miles with nothing.
Yeah, it'll be south, south of Sway City is where that stopped, so.
So you'll have.
P thirty is the dividing line.
So a lot of that'll probably just be traveling it, I don't think there's much vegetation on it right now anyways.
There's nothing, we, we were wishing for vegetation on it.
I believe it, cuz that's a steep one there, I mean, I've had to walk it before, it's not very fun. But, uh, yeah, I can make a note of that, where if it, if we don't even need to travel it, we won't even waste the time doing that either.
No, I don't think you need to.
I, I wouldn't waste your time.
Just, just go up north, hit the north end of it.
Start, start on, start at P thirty.
P thirty?
South of Sway City, about mile and a half.
Okay.
And go up from there.
Alright. Okay, yeah, other than that, I mean.
Marge, you got any?
Um. I don't know, one oh, one oh five had some cleaned out recently, but.
Yeah.
I mean, there could be some.
Probably still needs some spot treatment, yeah.
And then Kyle, you had those people that were requesting, um, Seneca thirty, Try eighty-four. I think Seneca thirty and thirty-two for brush control, I can send you the request for that or location.
Yeah, that'll be a specific spot.
Yeah.
Okay, and you just want me to make it a quote for those ones too and send it in, or just do them?
Just.
Well, you can just do them and do.
Yeah.
If you don't like to do it that way, cuz it, it'll be a different request.
Okay.
It will, we'll do the paperwork a little bit different.
Which one is that exactly?
Um, it's in Center thirty, so I'm thinking Try eighty-four, but I'll send you it.
Yeah, I think, I think it is Try eighty-four.
Okay.
Just give me a call when you go look at it or whatever.
Yeah, if you send me a location on that, then I can get up there and take a look at it, see what they got going on for sure.
Okay.
So.
Other than that, I think it'll look good.
Yeah. I can't think of any in the center part of the county that need, well, there's some in the north end that need a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, I think we're, the guys are finishing up up there, I think they just finished up, uh, maybe a day or so ago. First Cassuth County for some stuff that we had already started last year.
Yeah.
And they got that finished up just, uh. I think it was just Monday, actually yesterday, I believe, so.
Was it one sixty-five we just took over?
Yeah.
One sixty-six, one sixty-six is the bigger one.
Right.
One sixty-five, we probably need to add that to the list because we are now responsible for it and we were not before.
But I don't know if you wanna do it this year, we.
That's on the west, he's in the middle right now.
Yeah, this is pretty much like right up.
Just put it, put it on your, put it on your radar because.
Okay, what is it?
One sixty-five.
Yeah.
It's, it's a short one, but there's a lot of, a lot of trees.
Okay.
And it might need attention this year, I probably should look at it.
Yeah, it almost needs to be cleared of its trees before we send him up there because it's.
Are they established?
Yeah, they're big stuff.
Yeah, then.
It's gonna be a project.
One sixty-five.
I think it'll be more than what you want, we might have to get a contractor in to.
Yeah, probably if they're too big, it's just, we just create a bigger mess really by killing them, so.
They're twenty foot trees.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, then we're gonna just get dug out.
Yeah, at least cut off, I don't know.
Probably need to do a repair request on that then.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at it.
And look at it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys wanna put something together, just whatever you wanna list out extras, opposed, aside from this, that way I can get a chance to look at them and. Throw a number on it and see what they can do with them.
Should.
Uh, we, we should probably look at that.
Yeah, but we should.
This week or something.
We can look at it, but I think we're going to end up having an informational meeting. With the landowners up there before we spend a ton of money and ask them if this is what they want, cuz they neglected it for twenty years.
While they turn it over to us, we have the responsibility, so. Codes requirement.
Yeah. I just don't mind all irritated right away.
Let them go and put it down, get some firewood.
Yeah. Uh. Anything else on any of those? You guys in the center part of the county, I can't think of anything.
I haven't any place on my way.
Okay. We're go to. Your quotes. The price sheet, any big changes on?
Uh, no, some of the, some chemicals have, but they're not stuff that we usually typically use on drainage ditches, but most of the stuff that we use on there is pretty much the same.
Do you, you guys, we got two new board members, would you like to explain what you use mostly on trees?
So like in the springtime and fall, like kind of the end of the summers, you know, the beginning and the end of summer. We typically use like a basal bark treatment, which is a twenty percent mixture of element four and basal bark carrier. And that's applied at the stem of the trees, you know. Eighteen inches from the ground on down, and then same products, different rate, we use it in a high volume. And you pretty much cover the whole tree, which is like your softer trees, I say, like your plums, willows, sumac, elderberries, stuff like that. And then the, the twenty percent mix is for like your hardwood trees, like oaks, box elders, ash, you know, things along those lines. Uh, guys typically get down the drainage ditches and, uh, we use side by sides now, we used to use four wheelers, kinda getting away from that cuz. They're just not efficient, so side by sides can haul two men, plus a lot more product. And, uh, they typically have a tank in the back, sixty gallon tank, that's the high volume they use and we just. Transfer that out of a bigger unit and from the pickup and they just keep making their way down the ditches until they complete them. Anything that gets too big, you know, we'll either throw the bark or cut into the bark to get into the cambium layer, make sure it dies. Uh, other than that, most of the time, anything that gets sprayed, by the time they fall down, they're so brittle, they're just, there's nothing to them really, so. They don't cause a problem, they don't wash down the bank and jam things up, so. And it does a pretty good job, I mean, we've had a lot of years of using the exact same stuff, so.
What's the maximum size we go to for like the, the tree size of hordes?
Uh, typically like fifteen feet, you know, depending on the species, you know, you can get a twenty foot cot wood that may only be, you know, six inches around, but, you know. Depending on if it were to make a mess or not, that's kinda what we go by, but typically like the fifteen foot range, so.
So basically just saplings?
Yeah.
A little bit bigger.
Anything that's like five, six years old, you know, I mean.
Okay.
Most of these things are rotations, so anything that's on there with any real size, it's been there for a reason, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And then in like midsummer, I guess, we use water products, we use element, or not element, but, uh. Method and open site. One's a liquid, one's a powder, mix it in water, uh, the open site's like seven ounces per hundred gallons and the method is twelve ounces per hundred gallons. Mix that in with a surfactant at eight ounces. And you just cover the, all the leaves on the trees and it doesn't hurt the grass, kills broadleaf. Doesn't leave a big stain anywhere, so. We typically like to use that just cuz it's a lot cleaner, it doesn't smell, it's just, uh, overall just easier to handle really, so. Two different ways of doing it, but basically that's how we do it across the board, really.
No, that really affects the crops or anything like that?
Uh, all of it can really damage beans, but, you know, all the guys are trained to spray it away from crop and keep it at a minimum, you know. Uh, typically in Iowa, we try and do early application and late application cuz a lot of times there's not much for a buffer strip or. Any buffer strip at all, so either the crop is before or at a young age, or it's already ready to be picked.
Picked now, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, sometimes if we can get in there in the summertime, I mean. We practice, you know, safety, like we're, we don't wanna kill anybody's stuff, we don't wanna run over anybody's crop, we don't wanna damage anything. Whether it be spray in a drift form or just, you know, negligence, so, in, which we've had in the past, you know, both the ways, I mean. You can't hold everybody's hand every day, so you never know, or it could happen, but we try to keep it at a minimum.
Good.
Try to contract, uh, farmers that have cows next to the ditch.
Uh. For the most part, yeah, like I'll contact the sheriff's department to let them know what area we'll be working in throughout the counties. And I'll, obviously I'll let you guys know when we start and finish. But, uh, yeah, typically the farm, the landowners, there's, you know, half the time, you don't know if they own the land that you're going across or not, I mean. I try to tell it, you know, our guys are informed to make contact if somebody's around, just to let them know what we're doing, what you're using. You know, contact information if they request it.
Yeah, you're gonna have two or three places where the cows.
Oh, for sure, yeah, and anything like that, anything that the guys come across, you know, uh, if you, after you open up a gate, you close a gate, you know, on your way in, on your way out. Something like that, you know, if you gotta go to a farmhouse and get in through there, which I just had to do the other day over by, uh, Coralworth. Talked to the guy, you know, the guy who were trying to skim across, you know, skim along the edge of a fence, I'm like. It's just cow pasture, you know, like I've done it for twenty some plus years, so it's like, I'll just go to the house and be like, hey, can I get in there? Typically, there's no problem, you know, sometimes they'll say they don't want you in there and then we'll reach out to whoever's in charge and let them know and then. You guys can reach out to them or however that will work, so. Communication is a, a must, you know.
I was gonna say, there's a couple of spots where there's. Pretty good sized trees on a couple of range, you know, old, old trees, but if you go in, you're still kill off all the saplings and leave the established.
Yeah, anything that's grown underneath, like established trees, we just spray anything underneath, if it is something that's, it wouldn't. Really make any effect to spray if it was so thick, you know, that would just be marked as a cut or clean out and then, you know, we would deal with that down the road.
Yeah.
So. Uh, sometimes like in the. Early spring, late fall, if there is a situation where we can spray it. With a foliar product to save some money, you know, we'll do that instead of going and dumping a bunch of oil and product out there and. You know, costing a bunch of money, those things get marked, then they move back, they get marked down as foliar and go back and hit those. Spots as needed, you know, whenever we can, when conditions are right, you know, so. That's one, one thing that we also try to do.
Seeing no further questions, would I have a motion to approve the quotes for BMW brush control for the dredge ditches?
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Jack.
Zach?
Jack.
Lance Stecker, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried unanimous. Thank you much.
Perfect.
We're gonna enjoy working with you, keep us informed on how it all goes.
Yeah, I think it's, uh. It's going pretty good yet, it's just, uh, every day there's a, there's a new door to open, so. The guy with all the answers isn't around anymore, so.
Oh, hang in there.
Guessing and a lot of flipping through old files and stuff like that, so. Everybody I've dealt with has been pretty helpful on the other end, so.
Good.
Marge, thank you for everything, for sure, and, uh, yeah, so you, that just, you're just gonna email that to me?
Yeah, if that works.
Perfect, yeah, and then the guys will probably be, will probably work on most of these late summer, early fall. Unless something changes and I run out of work. Hopefully not, but.
Yeah, hopefully you don't run out of work.
There's a bunch out there, it's just, we got all the equipment and we got the manpower, it's just how I have to do this part, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
You can figure out that this part is a lot worse than doing the physical part.
I always, I understood why my dad would just wanna get out of the office some days, so you just do laps in there, but.
Yeah.
Either way, somebody's gonna do it, not like doing the work, I don't really wanna get a different job, so.
Yeah.
We'll be around for a while.
Good.
Good.
Alright, thanks for your guys taking care of it.
You bet.
Thanks.
You got that down, Marge? Yep. We will jump up to do drainage repair requests.
I could be the lucky winner today.
Looks like Kyle gets it.
These are all, see KS.
Yeah, nevermind.
We're trying to figure out what KS stands for.
Yeah.
Initials.
I thought maybe it was Kicksticker or something like that.
Could be.
Yeah.
Kickstart.
Kickstart, there you go.
Number sixteen is in Lincoln, section thirty from Daniel Benkin. Flag broken tile needs fixed, about a hundred feet east of the fence line. So guessing that's just a washout, we'll get that checked out. Seventeen, um, I, we had discussed this last week, but I called down to have Melissa put the request, she wrote this up for me. Uh, for reseeding Drain four. I talked to Leon after our conversation and he said if we do it right away here with the project. He feels fairly comfortable that we can justify that to FEMA with pictures showing that the seeding, the original seeding did not establish. So I spent a considerable amount of time checking with styers about flying on seed. And, um, we ended up applying that yesterday. I've got some photos I could share with you guys on the coverage, but I was out there, Nathan was out there, we were. Um, inspecting things as it float, as it was applied, made a few adjustments with the wind as the conditions were required. And, um, I'm fairly happy with how the application went. The only thing we have to wait for is see what mother nature does, but. That was the only day they could apply in the near future with the wind conditions we had, so. Um, we had to act on it right away.
Yeah, yesterday was pretty good for low wind.
It was calm in the morning, after lunch it picked up to probably about ten mile an hour, but they said they really couldn't. Couldn't accurately apply seed much above that, and all the other days look like they're gonna be a little breezier. Couldn't accurately apply seed much above that, and all the other days look like they're gonna be a little breezier, so. Um, I can pull the picture real quick to show you guys that, but. Um, the number eighteen, last one is lead yard, section nineteen, sinkhole for getting moved at all. So. Says it's a pretty good sized one, so we'll get that checked out and repaired and. That's the presence I have for today.
So what'd they seed?
There's a waterway grass mixture, um, it's actually substantially less than what the um, engineer specs say. That was close to two hundred pounds per acre, but um. This is, we see this at fifty pounds per acre, which was twice the recommended rate of. Typical waterways, but they, they recommended, the. Guy we talked to at Albert Lee Seed House had recommended bumping it to fifty because of the side slopes of the ditch and the application method, so. That's what we went with, um. Don't know exact cost, but with application and seed, we'll probably be in the thirty thousand ballpark, but with.
Hey, it's, it's hard to beat that, I can see that play.
Hydro seeding?
Cause they did that with the main street there last year, and they put that on there, and I bet within a week, the grass was, was growing ready, they didn't water or nothing.
The, the difference is when hydro seeding was applied on drain four last year, some of the lower stuff took, it was. Shower ditches, it was earlier in the season, so it was cooler, but the stuff that was applied mid to late summer when it was hot and dry, I mean. With the, with the drought levels we had, it, it, it dried out like that, it was, it was applied to spec, but we didn't have Mother Nature to cooperate, so that's why. We're pushing to do it early and upfront now, while we have conditions that will give it a chance to grow, so. Cross your fingers, say a couple prayers on that one.
Well, I'll make the motion for Supervisor Stecker to handle those repairs.
Second. Carter? I have a motion in a second for Mr. Stecker to do his repair request. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Marge, on drainage?
No, that won't be readily emailed in a second.
Yeah, do you remember anything about that? There was no decision made after, so, did you get the mail?
Yeah, but I don't.
Well, I mean, those things are typically, you turn in, you turn in a bill.
He didn't have an actual bill, he had an amount that was agreed upon.
I don't remember anything about that.
We, he didn't have, he didn't have a bill, he didn't have a number, and then it was after the thing was closed.
There's rules and, and how would we pay it, how would we pay it now?
We can't.
We can't go back.
Well, we don't even have a method, do pay it now, it isn't part of the project.
I mean, you, you know, they, that's explained at those hearings and, you know, turn in a bill, this one has to be turned in and then, and you'll, it'll be. Taken care of, but if there wasn't, if it hasn't been taken care of, that means there was never a bill submitted.
Well, the project closed, so we can't, we're not gonna open up a project, pay a bill.
I don't, I don't know that there's a legal process.
I don't need it, I didn't know how we do it. Well, there isn't.
It's one of those things, it's, it's a lesson learned to, you're gonna submit something.
There was an amount for the buffer that originally was, and I didn't pay that one waiting to hear what's the one, so that one was approved. But I hadn't paid it because we're waiting for his other bills.
And that's different because it was submitted in time versus.
It went through the process.
Yep, yep.
So I might go ahead and proceed with the one that was.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's because we don't even have a process to pay anything like that. Thank you, Marge, anything else with drainage, I can stop him and talk to you after a bit about.
Yeah.
Lead yard, Mr. Stecker is aware of it.
Okay, okay.
Roger's got his note, I got my note.
You turned it before, so if you, when you stopped in, I'll ask you.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't think I.
The beavers moved the dam?
No, you, oh, somebody turned in tails, and I just want to know the location.
Oh.
Cause you have a drain listed and it's not.
It's not in the right one?
No.
Okay.
I just wanna verify where it came from.
Okay, well, we'll go do it.
And then, um.
I've got a form returning to you too, and I forgot it, I'll bring it.
And then the, the one oh five, they resubmitted an invoice, so that one's taken care of too, on uh, Dave Rosen.
Oh, oh, yeah, yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so that one's done too.
Well, the beavers didn't, they, they didn't get trapped in the right spot then, huh?
I don't know.
I don't know, my darn beavers.
Okay.
They just come out of nowhere.
They were probably trapped in the right spot, just wandered off.
I may be in later this afternoon.
Okay, okay, all right, I'll get.
Thank you, Marge, you're gonna send it up?
Yep.
Yep, back in before we finish anything?
So is that parking lot down there resolved, is it?
No.
I, I had an email from Tom, that's what I'm asking you about the status of that, I don't, you get the email I forwarded?
Right, and there's, really, they're going to park an ambulance, the extra ambulance in that building now. And use it for ambulance storage, so I think basically. We still have stuff parked in that lot anymore, because there's gonna be an ambulance that's gonna go out of there on emergency calls.
Which ambulance is that?
The one that's in, do you ask Phil, Phil told me they're parking one in there now.
I'll, I'll have to ask him, that's news to me.
Oh, that, that's what I was told.
Cause Albona has room for four down at the hospital.
Well, there's gonna be one in there, according to Phil.
I guess I'll have to ask him.
Does the training come up?
Yeah.
I know they had, they had talked about that as a potential when we were looking at the building and stuff, but that was. Talked about to have it on the, farther on the south side where it could come out of that other door on cold storage, I believe, but.
He said they're going to have it in the warm spot because it's going to be. All the equipment's gonna be in there, it needs to be, so it has to be in the warm.
We don't want it freezing, yeah.
Right. And the other thing is, is Chris is talking about something that fire departments want to use the, the. Whatever you call that trailer.
That bigger trailer?
Yeah, and they're gonna leave it hooked up to the pickup if they can in the future so that certain people can come take it out of there if there's a need for it.
So what's she gonna drive for a vehicle?
Uh, I'm gonna come to the board and ask for a different vehicle to be used for her. So, who's ever here on that board now, you'll probably need her body, so. So, I think things are changing, maybe we'll have to readdress what we think of at point in the month.
Okay.
We are up to time with our auditor.
Okay, um, I have a couple things, um, next week. On the agenda for the second, we have uh, presenting some years of service awards for Judy Sam for twenty-five years of service and Elaine Davis for twenty years of service, she. She um, is retiring here, so Elaine will, yeah, so, um, and then. And then, um, on May fourth, I have you guys down on the agenda, which is Thursday to meet with the department heads. To talk about warehouse hours and paid lunches, so.
It's coming Thursday.
Um, next Thursday, yeah, the, 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 yes, yeah, I think I sent you guys an email about that, so, um.
Open enrollment on Wednesday too, huh?
Yep.
Yep.
Thursday at four?
Thursday at nine.
Thursday, fourth, nine, okay, I got it now.
Yeah, okay.
And then for that open enrollment, do we just gotta go to Don's office or?
The election center.
Elections.
Elections.
It's, it's, um, it's like a presentation that we do every year. And then.
Tonight for, for you old people, you can go to the sixty-five and over, over insurance.
I'll get right on it.
I'll be there right away.
I think probably you should, you're looking a little peeked.
I wish I was closer. So, um, I need to finalize RSVPs for the intern breakfast for Cusid Economic Development, I will, so, um, so, so far I have. Um, Carter, Josh, Kyle, Tammy going, are you just still hoping to attend? And um, Jack and Roger, do you plan to attend, it's on May twenty-fourth, seven thirty to nine.
Yeah, you usually write everybody down.
Yeah, do you plan on going, Jack? Okay.
I got intern breakfast, seven thirty.
Yeah, you're right, okay, then I will finalize that RSVP for that, um. Okay.
Don't, don't forget Whipple at ten o'clock next week.
Yeah, and I know, um, Doug and I had to do an agenda request for that for the close session, so that'll be good. Then yesterday we had a unique um, situation, there is a lady who came to the treasurer's office, um, out of breath. She had oxygen, um, and she has some serious health issues, and she needed a chair to sit down because she was out of breath. And so I went up and asked if she needed a wheelchair to go out because there's no way she was gonna make it back to her car. So we were able to borrow a wheelchair that driver's license um, had and got her back up to her car. Which made me think that it would be nice if we had a wheelchair available for those types of situations, because we do have a lot of people. Who come in to pay their taxes or get their dri- driver's license or their tags or whatever, and it's a long, even if they use the elevator, it's a long ways for them to walk. So I talked to Donna Nielsen to see if she was aware of anything, and she said to call Doug Anderson at the BFW that. They, she knows that they loaned some out, but even if he doesn't have any, he might be able to direct me in the right direction to get something, you, you don't have to have anything new. But I wanted to see what you guys' thoughts were on that and if you have any ideas of, of maybe what.
Could potentially talk to the hospital too, um, they may have some extras available.
Well, sometimes they have a chair that's better than a wheelchair for pushing.
Good ask Phil too, he might know something.
I, I just.
And if we're gonna have um, a wheelchair available, maybe we put a post that on the front door, because if they come in the front door with a wheelchair, well, they got stairs to go down and up, so maybe. Say, you know, wheelchair accessible in the rear, you know, something like that, and then. Stage that wheelchair inside the, inside the double doors there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or around the corner, slide that bench over further or something, so you don't have to walk around it.
Well, if that double door is wide enough, I think we could stage one in there.
And, and I know that, um.
Cause they fold it, they collapse it, so.
If you set a driver's license has one.
Yes, they have one in the back that they.
Why not just set that?
Well, I thought about that, but then I thought, well. Then what happens if they need it for some, you know, I mean, if, if it, it doesn't hurt to have two, one that we keep back there and one that we use on a regular basis for people coming in and out. Cause that one's kind of for, I don't know, situations, I, I mean. I don't think they want it sitting out all the time for people to use, I think we need to get something extra to use. I, I mean, I don't wanna spend a lot of money, I just think it'd be nice to have one sitting there at all times.
Yeah, I think at the hospital, it's all, they use one.
Yeah, so even if somebody.
Figure if they have one sitting down there. Just set that one out there, if we're gonna set one out, just set that one out.
I can ask them what they think about that.
It wouldn't hurt to have it too, I mean, well, you never know, there might be a situation where someone does need it, someone else has it, and they're. On it, you can't really just say, hey, stand up, we need that wheelchair, so.
Well, my thought is if it's there, people are gonna use it, so, where if it's not, they might walk, so I think if you have one sitting there, they're gonna use it more often. You know, just my thought. I don't know.
Go down the basement.
Yeah, you see what you come up with and let us know.
Okay, I will do that, and, and like I said, I don't, don't wanna spend a lot of money or anything, I just thought anything we can do to help. Accessibility for the public would, would be nice, this, this lady was very appreciative.
There might be some grants or something for accessibility, I don't know.
The lady was very appreciative, and she, she did even say it would be nice if, if I knew that there was a wheelchair here for me to use, so. So, um, and then that, I think.
You know, if they were high on drugs and needed a wheelchair, we could use the drug money.
And how are you gonna determine that, Roger?
That's like creative.
Not too soon.
Well, I think at that point, they wouldn't need the wheelchair, we'd just have the sheriff come drag them out.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, you never know, they might be wanna pay their taxes or more, we wanna drag them out.
Well, we can have the sheriff hold them up while they're paying their taxes and then drag them out.
So, um, and I think that is all I have. I'm glad to have the budget done.
Good. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, another year?
Another year, yeah.
Go through your binder for Whipple for next week for discussion on. I highlighted a bunch of things in mine when I read through it that I kinda questioned how we interpret some of the things. There.
And I did.
Kinda written in lawyer language.
I did give you all a copy from Jack on the public, so you should all have that to add to your practice. And I will send a copy of that to Tim and email a copy of it to Doug.
Do we need to add something on the agenda for that for next week, so we can get that back in?
I think we already agreed that it would be put in there once we got it signed, I think.
That was the, that was the agreement, once that was signed, it would be in.
Yeah.
But this, and this kinda talks about the potential risk or concerns related to.
The only thing they, they, Van Tager didn't wanna put in is the thousand feet, I, I don't know, what, what do we have that says a thousand feet exactly, so. I says that's fine, it doesn't. If you don't feel comfortable, you just take that last line out.
I mean, I can add it to the agenda if you think I need to.
I don't think we do this really, cause it, where we said we'll put it back in once, once the board meeting.
Part of the recommendations, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
It, yeah, it'll, I would say it'll be addressed in the process of your.
That is, I just wanted to make sure that was covered, so.
Yep.
Yep, sounds good.
Good for you.
Yep.
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Huh, busy week next week or not?
Um, just the, due meeting with the department heads and the. Um, years of service awards, that's all I have so far.
Oh, and Whipple.
And Whipple, yeah, I'll write that on here.
Don't squeeze the charm. Jack?
At the board health meeting, um, spent some time talking about the pipeline, um. We're there, getting it approved, we're put back in the book. Um, they just had some updates, grant updates, budget amendments, so. There is a new vaccine available for COVID, um, they aren't recommending it really for people under sixty-five. Unless you have underlying health problems, um, sixty-five older, uh, I guess they say you can get it. Um, but, not a lot of businesses really have people getting that, getting, it has to be four months since your last shot in order to get it. So, you know, they, they're really pushing it this new one.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the next one. Carter, you got anything?
I got air connection this afternoon, otherwise. Set some other drainage and, and some other stuff to take care of this week.
Josh?
Uh, nothing last week, but there you go, several, um, we got the Cusid Paltar Economic Development.
Uh, nothing last week, but they got several, um, we got the Cassuth Paltau Economic Development at three o'clock, um, emergency management at six o'clock, and then the E nine one one following the emergency management, so. Got a few tonight. I did go to first part of the safety meeting, right?
Second?
EMS at five is still already highlighted, um, as Carter just touched on, the secondary road safety meeting last Friday, I was able to be there for the whole thing, um. There's, there's a significant concern, um, about equipment, I would say, in the conversations, um. Met with our mechanic informant here yesterday, and I'm hoping to visit with Doug after the meeting here today, but, um, I think we probably need to put a little more emphasis than we previously have on some of the issues we've got going on there right now, so. Hopefully, we can make some progress in getting caught up and moving forward, but. That's, I think that's all I got, besides stuff that was already talked about, so.
I guess I question why you would meet with a mechanic when he's not, he's Doug's report, not ours.
I asked, wanted to talk to him about some of the equipment and stuff, and I'll talk to Doug after that, so.
You, uh, you don't wanna make anybody that's in the road department think that they should report to a supervisor individually, they should report to us as a whole, if they have a concern, this is a building to come in, is my point, so I'm saying don't get yourself caught crosswazing in anything that's not under your jurisdiction.
If you're gonna need, then you should need, you should need Doug's office, and that's where Doug's aware of everything that's being talked about and said to, not, not individually.
Doug was there as well.
Okay. Don't make the situation worse than it is, is my, guess my message. I didn't have anything last week. I drove by the safety meeting, and I had a whole bunch of stuff to do, and I never did get that to it, so. Anything else to come before the good of Cassuth County? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn. Whacker, second. Carter? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried, we are.